Here it is December twenty eighth Tuesday. Welcome to our COVID nineteen Town Hall update here. Where we'll pass out timely information from our health professionals and hear an encouraging message and some updates from the office of the President Vice President. So we thank you for joining us all across the land, all across the globe now we can do so with social media and the internet. So Vice President Elijah here. It's good to be with you all. So let us up open up in prayer as we always do. Shajadi and God, we thank you. Thank you for another day, Lord, in which to be busy about the work of the people. We thank you for your leadership. Thank you for placing leadership in office, in authority, in power, in place, Father. We acknowledge that and we thank you. We thank you. Now we ask as leaders for your great wisdom and knowledge. Thank you for our health professionals and all those that are working compassionate with love, grace. And you continue to give out your love and grace for the people of the land. We thank you for this time. Now let us meet and go on in safety. Let us meet and go on in power. Let us meet and go on in protection, your protection, Lord. We thank you again. Be with us on this Town Hall update as the people of land receive the messaging and they receive the guidance and what we ask that although everything is, we're dependent on you for all things. We'll work like it depends on us, Lord. You empower us. You give us the protection. You give us the strength to go on and the guidance. Thank you again. Jesus mighty name we pray. Amen and amen. So again, thank you. It is December twenty eighth here as we close out the year. This will be our last Town Hall for this calendar year twenty one, home to look forward to the future at twenty two. So appreciate our President Jonathan Nez's stellar and exemplary leadership in this fight against this pandemic, in this virus. So sir, good morning. We appreciate you online and thank you for your leadership and look forward to hearing your messaging. Ladies and gentlemen, the President of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez.
Good morning and thank you for the prayer, Vice President. Thank you for your leadership as well. You know, Vice President, who would have known, right? We would be leading or serving through a pandemic, you know. Three years ago, we were inaugurated and we didn't know that this was gonna, you know, sweep the world, really sweep across this country and come into the Navajo Nation, but appreciate your leadership, Vice President, and also the Second Lady Dottie Lizer for everything that you have done. You know, it's been tiresome, but you know, we do gotta continue to move forward as our ancestor did, has to have done for these since time immemorial. So Akon de kadeh di New Year di na twenty twenty one biye. Laan shei ei nihi na nihi deiliya. Laan shei ei koon nihi ei nihi ne bahajov ba laan shei ei ya alkaal nahcha nihi na nihi dahla vahehe nihi tsunaha hehe nihi tsunah di ne kro shinaa Bill Vice President Lizer. Aro di na shei koon hane nihi jekuna deil ne to leto nihi jovaiin shkech ei nohliini. Do hane nihi jekun deil ini giya ba da hosne. Ba da hosne. Aro di ro ze nihi chedet di tukosun tschagina hast ei tsadha. Bikijet na anish ei ze gi kanaa aji ki naa halo. Laei don tsun da daan ei laa do dan zanigi ei kala ze azeel indan da hazth sha do tsen de da no da kand da la na dan zan laei nihi da tohna aro laan shei ei biti nohkei. Di tukosun tschagina hast ei tsadha. Do yateh da do di kudel naa ya do ta yobit fahni ka ei binin na ei kutaon nihi jovba deini keer akuichi akuichi hota ini hi na nihi deiliya. Do hehe shee da bedi nihi do zeel indan deini gi. Yeegoo do akuichi ei koon naxan dalne shto nihi kee da deez i tsulaa da. Kujeh di nihi naxan da pa akuichi nihi kee da deez i gi di de ne naxan dalne sh. Ei shee do batso da dohtsun ashkona. Ya akuichi koon da khae do nihi do lego ta di kaad ne bikia pokaal laan ez di nohwa anez na. Adasso go ei jian dasi ni do di clean dal ini gi dan dasi ni. Hota nihi na nihi deiliya. Ei tsulaa bill di zeel inda bill. Koon naxan dalne shi gi do tra kaai je nihi do tra nasna do do aro naa taai dalde ni besh bahas anda. Yeegon nihi kaai je o da. Ei binin na ei kodo adatso dohtsun do naxatso dohtsun ashkona di ka twenty twenty two je. Na naa haagi joa je na hoa jishki nohlii. So ada ada halliado bina ei itzas. Di kui shee na 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 di dmo naa tle gi bi ye shee do tsaasoda ei nasht ada dohne ashkona. Aro nihi masa nihi cheni nala da banda nothka. Ada ze yateh on da hazth. Ei nihi naa sa la alshen nihi deini gi ki ei nihi deini gi atsoke na leke nihi deini gi do ei Washington basilar. Nihi naa sa la de ne nihi deini. Do ei on le Washington nihi da deet ii da ashkona shki nohlii. Banda nothka de skazoda. Laei dahne ches nihi da aten chaada naa nihi jeku daalia. Summer eh da ches ndahohieh da nihi daon ni. Ya masa nihi cheni nala o da ast ada dohne. Da nihi daon ni. Ei naa nihi ne abidahilza di chen shki nohlii. Ei shee hota ei ya da nihi deini gi nas nas itiloda de shki nohlii. So konsoshiya o da neke chen nihi jahanaa nasitola de. We welcome you to the last Town Hall of the year two thousand and twenty one. I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas. Good Thanksgiving. During Thanksgiving, you know, you all did a good job. We didn't get much of a spike. We haven't seen the numbers for the Christmas yet, but if we followed that same protocol in Thanksgiving, you know, we did. We did that through the Christmas break, then we should be seeing some low numbers, but we'll see this week. But there is a concern. There's many, there's people that are going into the hospital with flu-like symptoms, right? Maybe just a common cold, but you don't know until you get tested. So there's high volumes of emergency room visits in Tubus City, Chinlea and Shiprock and other places. And there are people testing positive, but we're not seeing many people going into their, into their hospitals for you know, couple of days to be monitored. I think it's fair to say that because many people are vaccinated. I think these are breakthrough cases, yes, but because their people are vaccinated, they're not getting sick as bad as before and they're able to stay home and not have to get admitted into the hospital. So this should be a testament of the strength and how this vaccine works. But we still have to wear our masks, social distance, stay at home as much as we can and continue to take care of ourselves and our bodies, you know, personal hygiene, washing your hands with soap and water, using hand sanitizers. So I'm gonna put up, we're gonna put up a chart, Eli, put up that chart. This is the last five days before Christmas and I'm hopeful, gotta be hopeful in this position that we all follow the protocols of our healthcare professionals and our leaders. The last five day trend you see on December twenty third, we had fifty seven cases in one day. And then you move to December twenty fourth, twenty one cases in one day. Twenty third and December twenty fourth, zero deaths. On December twenty fifth, twenty two cases, COVID positive cases and three deaths. Remember, these are tracked using state records. And sometimes there's a delay in getting information because of the break, right? Not everybody's working, not the full team is at the healthcare facility. So there's a delay in reporting. December twenty sixth, there's been nine. We haven't seen single digits in a while. Positive cases and then two deaths. And then yesterday, twelve positive cases and no deaths. Keep in mind delayed cases will be tracking this. We do have a Navajo Nation COVID response team with healthcare professionals that I meet with. We'll be meeting on this tomorrow because of the concern of the increase in emergency room visits lately with flu, flu-like symptoms. If you go to the next slide. The next slide has the comparison between the total population of the Navajo Nation, sixty one percent. But if you look at the eligible residents, those that live on the Navajo Nation. That is seventy two percent fully vaccinated and you all are doing an outstanding job. I know boosters, this is not counting boosters, but we need to get boosters as many people with their third shot as we can now. Let's go to the next chart. And this is the progression since the start of this pandemic and you could see the ups and downs for these past over twenty months. And you can see, you know, the first waves, that big wave was last year, last Christmas. And if you compare last year's wave with this year, look at the United States is starting to see a large increase in cases. That's the dark line on the far right side of this chart. You could see it just skyrocketing. Now, if you look at the Navajo Nation, we're seeing a downward trend there. And I, again, I think it's really because of the vaccination. The vaccinations also you know, limit the spread of cases as well. So but you know, I'm still hopeful, prayerful that, you know, this is not, remember, this is not counting the Christmas break numbers. That's coming up this week and we'll see what happens. This coming week's report. So if you go to the next slide, this is how we're doing compared to other states around us. The highest, the top one is Maryland. Way at the top with high case counts, New York City, Dushuka Columbia, high case counts. Now, the first red one there, right in the middle, is New Mexico. Right under New Mexico is Arizona, right under Arizona is Colorado. The bottom red one is Utah. And look at where Navajo Nation is, that's the yellow. So we're doing all right in the last seven days. But of course, one person who catches the virus is one way too many. You go to the next slide. This is an update as of December twenty first. We will be getting a new update soon, but I just wanna, as of today, from the reports I have received, we don't have any verified cases of Omicron here on the Navajo Nation. But that doesn't mean it's not here. It's just means that the way we get the verification is those that are getting tested, those tests go off and they get looked at at the lab and they look at, look for Omicron and then they send that report back to us. So with the increase in hospital emergency room visits, you know, it could mean that there is Omicron here, but it's not been verified here on the Navajo Nation. So that doesn't mean it's not here. So let's just not feel like we're not having any spread here on Navajo too. So, but it just means that it's not been verified here. The other thing too, ladies and gentlemen, is just to take care of yourself. There's large gatherings if you're eating, remember what I said, if you're eating and gatherings six feet apart, six feet apart if you're eating. Let's commit to doing that. Six feet apart to eating, because that's the only time we really, or when we drink or eat, that's when the time we take off our mask. But more so when you're eating. Just stay six feet apart from people, you know, when you're eating. Eat outside. I know it's cold right now, but you know, those are things that have been helping us get through this pandemic and that's the last slide. So I just want to wish you all a Happy New Year. Be safe. The weather is cold out there. Check on your grandparents, you know. I know people are gonna say, well, give me some wood, give me check on our elders for us, but that's our responsibility, you know, as Navajo residents, our family members. You know, we gotta take care of our grandparents or elders, you know. It's not, it's not, it's not up to the Navajo Nation government to do that. It's for all of us to check up on our elders and also pray for them too as well. And to help them throughout these difficult times. Snow, there's about just a dusting here in Winter Rock of snow. But there is a there's snow that's supposed to be coming again, so let's prepare. And I know it's from people, it's like, where's the woods, you know? Remember Grandma, Grandpa told us already that we should have been preparing during the summer. So those of you that are saying buy some wood and you're supposed to be doing that during the summer. That's preparation and that's what we've been taught. That's not my, my teaching. That's the elders' teaching that I'm sharing back with you. I know it might sound harsh, but that's just how we have gone through these difficult times because of that teaching that has gotten us here. And I know that a lot of the elders, at eighty seven percent of our sixty five years and older have been fully vaccinated. Our elders are taking this pandemic very seriously. We need to take it seriously too. We also need to remind ourselves of who we are as Navajo people and help it. And as we go into twenty twenty two, you know, the council's gonna be going into session tomorrow. Talking about the, the American Rescue Plan Act funding for infrastructure, for hardship assistance. So if you have any questions, you know, feel free to contact your council delegates. We, we want that bill that has been introduced by Seth Damon, the speaker, that will allocate some money for hardship and also for infrastructure, waterline, electricity, homes, broadband, telecommunications, you know. We already have thirty months left in ARPA deadline. We need to get that done. Rather than tabling it or changing it up. Tell your council delegate, now's the time to step up and pass this legislation. Because the executive branch, we're ready to go. We know, we already hired, hired some people to begin these projects. We are hiring more. Those of you that are looking for work here, look at our website and apply for these positions. And we're looking forward to building our nation, making it stronger than, than what it is today. And we have that opportunity now with these dollars. And so continue to pray for our leadership, for wisdom, strength, protection and good health. And we appreciate everybody for their hard work throughout this trying times, this pandemic. So God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation. I'll turn the time over to our Vice President, Vice President Myron Lizer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. And you're right. What a time to be on the cusp of some great change, some great improvements on our nation with regard to broadband, internet, infrastructure, economic development, infrastructure and the like, water, power to our homes and the nation will advance. And so it'll be incrementally, and as I say that incrementally, usually is connotates almost unnoticed as far as you know, people expecting the tick to move, but it is happening and the need is so great here on Navajo that, you know, we need more than three, almost three billion dollars. We need forty billion dollars to catch up our Navajo Nation. So this is the time. So we pray for our council delegates to be in unison, to put forth this special council session and to unify themselves and as President said, to support the bill that legislation that Seth Damon introduced, our speaker. So yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And so now my segment here, before I bring on our health professionals, is just bringing some updates, some news nationally and globally when that is needed. So our Navajo Nation news, our Navajo residents on the nation remain active in battling COVID nineteen for twenty one months when the virus was first detected way back on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. The Navajo Nation has adhered to, as we heard from President, and followed the recommended guidelines suggested by the CDC and Food and Drug Administration as it pertains to COVID nineteen and its mitigation and vaccine rollouts throughout this pandemic. Larger, on a larger note, national note, President Joe Biden on Monday pledged to support governors struggling with the Omicron variant of COVID nineteen, but acknowledged that states will need to take the lead in controlling the pandemic. Speaking just before a meeting with some of the nation's governors, Biden said, there is no federal solution. This gets solved at the state level. So the message is loud and clear, Navajo Nation. It's up to ourselves, just as we heard from President, it's our families and our communities to prove that there is a way to defeat COVID nineteen. And we're all in this together. Centers for Disease and Prevention, the CDC has shortened the recommended time for the COVID nineteen isolation and quarantine. CDC is shortening the recommended time for isolation from ten days for people with COVID nineteen to five days if asymptomatic, followed by five days of wearing a mask when around others. Therefore, people who test positive should isolate for five days and if asymptomatic at that time, they may leave isolation if they can and continue to mask for five days and minimize the risk of infecting others. The change is motivated by the science demonstrating that the majority of coronavirus transmission occurs early in the course of illness, generally in the one to two days prior to onset of symptoms and the two to three days after. Per CDC, as of December twenty seventh yesterday, two hundred and forty two point four million people have received at least one dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine. Of those, two hundred and five point two million are fully vaccinated. More than sixty six point four million people have received a COVID nineteen booster. Little bit closer to home, Arizona. From Arizona Governor Doug Ducey's office, accomplishments, optimism and strength. Arizona's twenty twenty one year in review report, Arizona also prioritized public health and safety, expanding access to COVID nineteen vaccines and testing, especially for underserved communities. The state has administered ten point three million doses to date with four point eleven million Arizonans fully vaccinated. This in the state, the almost seven million citizens, residents in the state of Arizona. Just to give it some, some perspective. Total positive cases twenty months into this, one million three hundred and sixty four thousand, six hundred and sixty nine with one thousand nine hundred and seventy six new cases. Batja County, sixteen thousand and ninety with twenty new cases to report. Navajo County, twenty six thousand, six hundred and ninety with thirty five new cases to report and Coconino County rounding out our tri-city, tri-county area, twenty seven thousand, four hundred and seventy two with nineteen new cases to report. Colorado, as you know, we do own land in Colorado, the nation does. Colorado appears to be headed into another COVID nineteen surge just four weeks after the Delta fueled wave started to break. Hospitalizations bottomed out on Saturday with nine hundred and ninety two people receiving care for confirmed COVID nineteen. By Monday afternoon, that had risen to one thousand and eighteen. So slight surge going on. An average of twelve point six percent of COVID nineteen tests back positive in the week ending Sunday with the highest rate since mid-November twenty twenty. Positive cases in Colorado, eight hundred and ninety six thousand, four hundred and three with one thousand, six hundred and ninety six new cases to report as of yesterday. New Mexico. COVID nineteen case rate in New Mexico has dropped enough to put the state in the middle of the pack nationally as we just saw from our President's little display there. Thank you, Eli. A much different picture than a month ago when the state routinely ranked in the top ten percent, our top ten for new infections. New Mexico's daily case average in fact fell by sixteen percent from four hundred and seventy five to three hundred and ninety seven infections per one hundred thousand people in a recent month-long period before Christmas, according to federal data. Throughout it all, the state's vaccination rate has remained consistently above average. Thank you, New Mexico. New Mexico is number eleven in the nation for percentage of the population with at least one dose, eighty percent or seven points higher than the national average. Total positive cases for New Mexico, three hundred and forty five thousand, six hundred and sixty three with three thousand and thirty nine. This is the Friday, Christmas Eve through Monday, twenty seventh Cali, three thousand, three hundred and thirty nine in three, four days. San Juan County, twenty eight thousand, two hundred and twenty five with ninety eight new cases to report there. And McKinley County, seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty nine with fifty nine new cases to report there. In rounding out our tri-state area, Utah, the rolling seven-day average for positive tests is one thousand, one hundred and fifty eight per day. The rolling seven-day average for percent positivity of people over people is ten point nine percent. The rolling seven-day average for percent positivity of tests over tests is seven and a half percent. Total positive cases, six hundred and twenty eight thousand, three hundred and ten with four thousand, six hundred and forty five in a four-day period. New cases, that's a four thousand, six hundred and forty five, that's about a little over a thousand, eleven hundred cases, eleven, one thousand, one hundred and fifty cases per day average over the last four-day period. San Juan County, two thousand, eight hundred and forty two. And a little bit closer to home, Utah Navajo Health System, one thousand, three hundred and ninety four. So in closing, a hospitalization from COVID nineteen is more than just a number. It's a family member who won't enjoy the traditional safe family gathering. Please get the vaccine and be there for quality family time for the New Year's holiday, the New Year's. Everybody's watching the playoffs, everybody's watching the Suns, everybody's watching the the, all of the shows in the year and the beginning of the year. So I know families gather, so please be safe while doing it. With Omicron on the move here, now is the time to get boosted. Schedule your shot, keep those around you safe and protected. and protected. And this year, don't be selfish for the holidays. Get vaccinated. It's the most effective way to protect yourself and your loved ones during gatherings, sleigh rides, and while you're rocking around with the fireworks. Fireworks are illegal here on Navajo. Our deepest gratitudes also goes to our heroic law enforcement members, men and women of the armed forces, first responders and correctional officers. We're grateful for the medical workers who are committed to helping us stay safety, stay safe and healthy, and for educators who we've entrusted with the responsibility of preparing the next generation of our Navajo children. Your service to the people of our great nation is an inspiration. President Jonathan Nez and I, we thank you for your exemplary leadership and helping mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 virus all across our nation here, known as Denetra, but all across our, the United States and the world. As you know, we Navajos are in every country, most more than likely across the globe. So we appreciate you. Thank you. Continue to stay safe out there, continuing to advocate what you hear as far as messaging from not only President and myself, but also from our health professionals. Go online to the CDC dot org or dot gov website, or go to this number of state Department of Health websites, or even the Navajo Nation Department of Health website. So we thank you again. May God bless you. And now I'd like to bring up, oh, I believe Captain or one of the, I'm not sure if it'll, it'll be Amanda Dr. Burridge or Captain Johnson. But we appreciate our Indian Health Service professionals there for helping and for helping us stay safe and for helping us divvy up all of this information. So yeah, may God bless you. Ladies and gentlemen, in the Indian Health Service.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Dr. Burridge. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. My name is Dr. Burridge. I am a pediatrician here in Tubus City and also leading our response team here locally and helping with the Navajo Nation response as well. I just want to thank Mr. President, Mr. Vice President for setting the stage and sharing some of the recent updates from what's been happening locally and in our four corners regions. I do want to share that even since the end of last week, we have seen a remarkable increase in cases here locally in Tubus City. And I know there's other servicing units that have also seen this rise in cases. This increase in cases is very concerning for the Omicron variant. We do not have evidence that it is actually here. However, it is very suspicious, given the rapid rise in cases, similar to what is being seen in other parts of the country. I know that our emergency rooms and testing sites have seen a very large increase in people who are seeking testing, and we've seen a large increase in positive cases as well. I think what's really important to remember with the Omicron variant is that hopefully this surge will look different from what we've seen in past surges, because we do have vaccinations and boosters for the majority of our population. And hopefully that means that this will be a much less severe illness, particularly for those people who have been vaccinated and have been boosted. Hopefully we'll not see the same surge in hospitalizations and severe illness. And again, thanks to those vaccines and boosters. What really is important to emphasize with this surge, similar to everything that we have seen in now almost the past two years, it is really the same prevention measures. So masking, masking is critically important. We know, now know that COVID is spread through aerosols and droplets, which are the particles that spread through the air. So masking is really the best way to protect yourself. I think what's important to emphasize is well-fitting masks at this point. So make sure that your mask that you're wearing fits well over your nose and your mouth. The CDC does recommend double masking. So if you have any surgical masks or a surgical mask underneath and a cloth mask on top, and that helps improve the fit of that surgical mask to make it as effective as possible. So again, make sure that you're masking whenever you're leaving the houses or interacting with anyone else. At this point, we have to assume that, you know, many, many people are positive. And so take precautions when you're interacting with anybody else. Also really important to emphasize distance, so keeping the distance from other people, and then ventilation. So if you are seeing other people meet up outside, open windows and doors, even though it's cold out, that ventilation and distance are really important as well in protecting you. And then if you do learn of an exposure, that you were with somebody who tested positive, or if you develop any symptoms at all, please get tested and isolate yourself from others so that we don't continue to spread this illness. As mentioned, there are other viruses circulating at this point. We have seen an increase in flu cases and RSV cases, two other viruses that normally circulate in the winters. So it is possible it's a different virus. However, at this point, it is predominantly COVID that we are seeing. And regardless of what virus it may be, you do want to protect your other family members, friends, et cetera. So again, just want to reiterate main things. We are seeing an increase in cases. This is what, you know, unfortunately, we are seeing on other parts of the country as well. But really, it's the same protective measures that we have been emphasizing all along. So get vaccinated, get your booster if you haven't already. And then mask, mask, mask. Make sure your mask is well-fitting. Try to double mask, so a surgical mask underneath and a cloth mask on top, and then get tested if you have an exposure or any symptoms. Now, as mentioned, you know, we're all in this together. We have done this before. Thankfully, this time around, we have vaccines. And we know how to protect ourselves and how to protect our family. So we'll keep you updated as we learn more. And I want to pass to Dr. Fowler, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Burridge. Okay, yeah, Captain Brian Johnson. At this time, we'll move forward to Captain Brian Johnson. Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Fowler. Hey, hello, everyone. Not quite the noon hour yet, but it's nice to be here on this Tuesday, reporting yet on another town hall session with the Navajo Nation leadership. Appreciate President Nez, Vice President Lizer, Dr. Fowler, Dr. Burridge from Tubus City Regional for participating as well on, on this particular session. Just wanted to make a few comments here today from the Navajo Area Indian Health Service. Again, I'm Captain Brian Johnson. I, I serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service and the work out of St. Michael's, Arizona. So just to say a big hello to my friends out there across Navajo land. But again, just wanted to touch base again here. We, of course, with the Indian Health Service, we continue to, to work with not only the, the Navajo Nation directly, with President Nez and his team, but also with the tribal delegates here on the Navajo Nation, sharing information as, as we continue to fight this pandemic. I believe we've been underway now for twenty-two months. And of course, over time with this pandemic, there's been a lot of changes, adjustments. We've seen the variants, various variants that have come in with COVID-19. And I continue to appreciate the great work that not only the Navajo Nation has done, or all of our tribal partners and the federal healthcare facilities, but just, just the Navajo population in general has responded extremely well over a period of time. And we know this has been a long, arduous battle over the last twenty-two months or so. And so we do appreciate your continued vigilance in, in terms of fighting this disease. But of course, we, we know that when we look at the national level, I think it's important to take a step back and just think about how, you know, this particular COVID pandemic has impacted our, our Native American people. And we, we know that Native Americans have seen an infection rate over three and a half times higher than, than non-Hispanic whites, and were over four times more likely to be hospitalized, hospitalized as a result of COVID-19. And, and also had higher rates of mortality, meaning the, the death rates associated with COVID-19 has been higher, particularly at younger ages than, than non-Hispanic whites. And what this really means is that we, we know that Native Americans, Alaska natives, are at higher risk of COVID-19. And therefore, it's, it's really incumbent upon all of us to work together, to, to focus on our important population, and to do what we can to stop the, the negative impact that it's had over this, these many months. It's also, and I think, you know, as I was mentioning, the Navajo Nation folks have, have, or Navajo folks have really responded well over a period of time. And when we look nationally, just at Native Americans in general, they have some of the highest vaccination rates in the country. So I think that's a testament to not only what's happened here on Navajo Nation, but also nationally, you know, word carries over and, 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 and marketing gets out, word gets out to the population about the importance of vaccinations. So again, you know, just looking back, we know this has had a, a very devastating impact on our population. We know that here locally, the Navajo people have remained steadfast and battled. And we were so thankful for the population working with all of us in the healthcare system, no matter which facility we might work for here on the Navajo Nation. It's just incredible the, the turnouts that have happened, the support that's been out there, and, and just making sure that individuals understand, you know, if we're going to fight this successfully, it requires that we get our vaccinations. That's, again, we've mentioned that that's the best tool that we have is our vaccines. And whether we talk about Pfizer or Moderna, or other Johnson, Johnson vaccine, really what, what matters is that you're getting your full vaccination series as well as a booster shot. And that's the major message from today for sure. I also wanted to take a step back just for a moment concerning, you know, there may be some confusion out there, of course, over twenty-two months of, of battling this disease. We know that there's been many changes over time. We know that we started with one age group of, of, for vaccinations. We know that we've had different age groups for booster shots as well. But just to make sure that everyone is, is on the same page, you know, we, we now at this juncture in the pandemic, we, we know that the, the vaccine has been approved for ages five years old and, and up. So when we talk about these vaccines and getting the two-dose series, for example, that, that does include the age groups of five-year, five-year-old and up at this point in time, in the event that you may have missed some of that information earlier. And I, I just think that that's very important as, again, there's been a number of changes over time. There's been a number of updates, and it can get a little bit confusing. So I do encourage you, if you have any questions on that, on the age groups, if you have questions about the two-dose series of Pfizer and Moderna, for example, you can, you know, go onto the CDC dot gov website, if you have access to the internet. Again, that's CDC dot gov, and that information is readily available for you. So, you know, of course, in the IHS system, and when I talk about the IHS system, I'm referring to both tribal health organizations as well as federal organizations. Again, we're all working together as a team, not only here on Navajo Nation, but, but nationally here within the United States. And it's just important to, to know that over two million, we're at the two-million mark of vaccines being administered across Indian country. And, and that's, again, another great testament to the work that's being done across the United States. And Navajo Nation certainly had a big part of that, of that success. And we just continue to remain committed to making sure that the vaccines are available and that, that you have, that they're accessible at our local health facilities. So certainly, if you have not gotten your two-dose series at this point in time, and you would like to do that, please reach out to one of our health facilities, the, the health facility maybe you regularly visit, and talk with them about opportunities to get those vaccinations, because we are truly concerned about those who remain unvaccinated at this time. We, we do know that, that those who are unvaccinated stand a great, a much greater risk of illness and severe illness with, as, as a result of not being vaccinated. So I just wanted to continue to mention that. Now, I touched just a little bit on the, on the two-dose series and the, and the vaccinations, and just how that, that continues to be a very important point of battling this disease. But also, again, it can get a little confusing when we start talking about booster shots. And for those who, who may not have kept up with the information, or maybe just didn't catch it as it first came through, of course, with the, with the two-dose series of Pfizer, Moderna, there's also what's referred to as a booster shot. And that has seemed to be very important as well, particularly when we're looking at Omicron and the new variant that's coming through. It's very important that the booster, that, that folks who have the full two-dose series vaccinations also get their booster shot, which is basically a third shot that will basically help provide a lot higher protection at this point in time. We do know over time that the booster, the, the vaccination shots do need to be, you do need a booster shot to keep up the, how protective the vaccine is. And so, again, we continue to, to encourage folks to go in and get your booster shots for, for those age groups that's able to get a booster shot. And just so people are aware, the booster shot age groups starts at sixteen years old at this point in time and older. And so that, that may be changing in the future, but just wanted to, to mention that as well. So if you're sixteen years old and older, and you've had your two-dose series, and you've had a number of months, it basically for Pfizer and Moderna, there is a six-month wait. Once you've had your two-dose series, then with Pfizer or Moderna, then you have a six-month wait before you can get your booster shot. And then if you, in terms of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, you have to, you have a two-month wait, once you've had your, your single dose of Johnson and Johnson. But again, realizing it gets a little confusing, can be a little bit complicated, reach out to your local health facility, look to your healthcare providers. If you have any questions about the, about the two-dose series, COVID-19, as well as the booster shots, and they'll certainly get you in the right place and, and, and make sure it's accessible to you. So beyond that, we know that, and spoke this a little bit, a little bit earlier, Dr. Burridge did. Dr. Burge did mention Omicron variant. And we're, of course, there's been some conversation about sequencing. And at this point, you know, what we know is that scientists are really continuing to investigate the Omicron variant. Now, again, this is just a different variant. We talked before about the Delta variant, and now we're talking about the Omicron variant that is becoming the predominant strain of the virus, or the variant of the virus in the United States. And it is recommended that everyone five years old and older continue to protect themselves, again, by getting fully vaccinated in order to fight this particular variant, and also get those vaccine booster doses for those age groups who are eligible. So again, we can keep this simple by saying we continue to use the same tools to fight the disease. It is, the best tools are getting fully vaccinated with the original two-dose series vaccine, and then also following that up with a booster shot when the timing is right. Also, you know, there are opportunities as well. We've had some conversation about self-testing, and we'll be providing more information on that, home tests. And that is, home tests are being provided to the Indian Health Service. And there are some of those kits, you will notice, are being shared during local vaccine events and through other means, working with the Navajo Nation CHR program and others, and with some of the chapters, and getting some of those self-test kits out into the population. And the Biden administration has also acknowledged that the Indian Health Service remains a, certainly a priority with the home test kit availability. And so we will be looking to continue providing the supplies that we have in hand. Also, just wanted to touch base on the flu vaccine. And I know Dr. Burge also mentioned this, but it's also important, because we know that there are other bugs, so to speak, out there at this time of year. And that continues to be an important point of being vaccinated as well. And there are opportunities to not only receive your COVID-19 vaccine, but also you can receive a flu vaccine as well at the same time. So in terms of time and just being efficient with our time, that's something that you can actually look into. And again, if you have questions about that, certainly reach out to your local healthcare provider. Again, there's no secret here to how we should be approaching, whether we're talking specifically about Omicron variant or continuing to battle COVID-19 overall. We know that masking is very important. As was discussed earlier, we talk about aerosolization of when one coughs, and the droplets that can travel from person to person. That's why it's so important to have a well-fitted mask, to make sure that that is not, those droplets are not allowed to escape into the environment of others. We know that it's important, especially when we're talking about indoors. If we're meeting, and whether you're vaccinated or not indoors, keeping a healthy separation. It's been, this is something that, I know it's very challenging during the holiday season. Hopefully, everyone did well with the holidays in terms of Thanksgiving and Christmas. And now we're moving into the New Year, so it continues to be important to make sure that if we're together with others, that we do keep a healthy separation indoors, and that we're wearing our masks indoors as well. Again, I just want to emphasize that for those who are unvaccinated, that is really the key issue here, and the key to stopping this disease, and really managing it to what's within our control, is to get vaccinated with the Moderna or Pfizer vaccine series. And then also to follow those up with boosters, your booster shot. Very, very, very important. And again, that's the best tools that we have are the vaccines and the booster shots. And I'm going to go ahead and stop there, and I'm going to turn the time back to Dr. Fowler. And I appreciate the opportunity here today, folks. And want to certainly wish everyone, I hope everyone had a wonderful Christmas, and hoping and wishing for the best New Year for the Navajo Nation and the Navajo people across the land. So thank you for the opportunity, and Dr. Fowler, back to you.
Thank you, Captain Brian Johnson. Ikhiahachayash. Di ekhodoh itsaladde benatqahmlini ekhutabilaganak etro e Navajo area. Deputy Health Director itsaladde di dina bilahoh sojha ajaba izaelinna. Na ambe young daadne she ikhiahachay do shedene. Hala di nichil ohoho tahi gi eya khodo banatahui ne. Ihiln tahui ne do itsaladde naqani danlini ajaba isha inisen. Aro pechba hasa aneda. Adna di no anna kethen de sit. Ohun sago e di bayan de, bayan de ichi do beni chichay isha ne de inisen. Aro seh enbesh hasa ango. Akho di atende bezi ishchijinichitene ninhi laha sojha. Ey ajba ishto hashine na ekhodo etado na. Akho ani eyegonas ni do ni na raheyegoyen. Akhondaj ajeyegoh bechet neepato bechet nseepa. Akhor shato ey bechet nasgon neepato leli gi di nichitene ninhi. Njuno ey ita ilado, njuno otalne. Njuno ey naikayas ichi do, njuno heisi. Chohot a ey di khodo izenlini benapen hazli. Na hana daadne hala ey eyegoh delne. Di izen benapen etadiyagi doubleaganak etro e Pfizer yinne. Moderna, aro Johnson &amp; Johnson, aro bechero ey booster deyinne. Hashi ni khodo shata onhiln tahui klan. Do shata dohot ego banahane. Akhondaj bechedi gi di na haalchuneyaj linii ishtla. Beda ichi do leitakohodes aj leishthui do sanji ey khatize. Patahazli ey khodona ha paahonosan. Anani khodo tikhui de she ishke tamon toltle. Tamon yajna oltle lo ban tahui ne. Hashi ani onhil tahui klan. Chro ey grik atizepahazli ishtla beda ichi do takohodes ago. Ey khatizepata honos. Aro di laha banatade ishkelmasano. Ey di milcha aben sekesi nicheholon da. Ey di CDC da kavilne. Chro aj bechet ohi. Do de izen ibesna hasa ago akhondaj izen bechon hatoshne. Akho di nichihahoh sojha do lebezi ishchijin. Elhatahoh so izen in a tribal health organization deyinne. Ajey di khanaki de bechso honene na ey izenlini ahada ya. Do do nichit eyya da bezi ishchijin. Ajdo bechischinetsa go akonene na izen na hana daadya. Akhonnasgon ne nje eya becheha ini no ini zel do ke izenina. Paas di nitle. Akhonnasgon ne nje ey di izenlini ahdo banahadazne. Eyegoh khodo nichit ihl. Haile benina kha izen do banahadazne. Chro di nohot ana iki di lchit. Akho di izen booster be di ninie ey di izen Pfizer be di ninidoh Moderna. Achchet shatna ha aka ey di hashtan deyiz bechajado ey booster yinne. Chakon ne ey na ha anato tsidro ey behothi. Akho di ni benahon ne omicran yinne. Ey khodene nichit hanchni oh eyegoh bedelne booster gi yinne. Aro di Johnson &amp; Johnson iki na ha eliyajro ey asladi behathos. Ey anaki damaki andezzidi bechajado ey booster gi hana toni. Chro ey ari sni khodo ari sni ninchisne. Oyo saho enel inaha ninda asla ey bayet oh saho otalga yaya na datchi. Akho di ni de Dr. Burge yahatsi gi omicran yinne. Chro ey do saho endodne. Ey e paahonosan ihi atona heylini dasne. Di ajyeda ani hisaytuz deyinne. Ninidaal khahi ati ney chado lahoh ani. Akho ashho ade ishtra beda ichi do takoi gi. Anaha daadsono haalchunapa daadsoni. Anon nasgon ne nje becheti di. Le di ey di ani izen benapen iliyagi ey bededolni. Aro di bilaganak edo sah test ohon testki yinne. Ey ahovade na adel khahi ey do khodo. Benye esah na ney chlehale tasa yoho wanthaho. Patahito nechro ey do ajba yechi do ey di Washington. Tenatke hasa ane, ane eyegoyela asne. Ey do patahonodo njuno tashi ha odzi. Ey kha izen inenlini ajyendaha. Aro anabelha di de khodso. Ti ni doh nasne hi ajdo izen. Bahonoh eyda izen na hana ta tojni. Akho apesei gi di ni gitshidon izen ashho ne abadada deyiz balona. Khayala tadelkho so. Ey nleit kajeyi dehtasoh. Ey aro etahadene. Aro hohono ne esodan de hohon ne kimbeyeta. Esahuda aplele baahotnia. Ashi ni kadi kesmishdo. Na haf bechet na tahui deyiz ne nanashin deyiz. Shikayos shedna hashto itaroni. Aro di izen ato banahadazne hi ashho ne shatoni kaofje. Beni izen bahadne adamnjuno kesmishdasohi. Chi do adamnjuno nichena ta tohah. Ichi ne. Ajay di shiyash na nado len. At this time, we'll turn over to Dell. Dell, you have the floor. Dell Yazi, you might be unmuted. There you go.
Okay, Kya Shama. Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Dell. I'm with the Navajo Epidemiology Center, and also with the Health Command Operations Center COVID Epidemiology Team. And here, I will provide an update on our latest Navajo Nation GATI measures with the time period between December 10th and December 23rd. And this is a two-week period. Okay, so before I start, I like to, you know, if you're new to our, to the town hall, I like to acknowledge and recognize our epidemiology team. We are a large EPI team focusing on COVID disease surveillance on Navajo Nation. And here on the right are the list of partners that are part of our epidemiology team. And I like to go through each of them to recognize them. So our staff from our Navajo EpiCenter within our Navajo Department of Health, IHS, and Navajo Area IHS on facilities on the Navajo Nation, the tribal health organizations, the Sixty Eight Facilities on the Navajo Nation. We are partnering with some folks from CDC and the CDC Foundation, and also some folks from Johns Hopkins, Center for American Indian Health, and also Community Outreach and Patient Empowerment, also known as COPE. Some staff members from there are working with us. And MTGen, we're partnering with as far as COVID strain surveillance, which of course is quite critical in our disease surveillance as far as new variants emerging on Navajo Nation, such as the Omicron. It hasn't been identified yet on the nation, but they are really an important, critical partner in our EPI work. And also, of course, last but not least, our state health departments from Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. So we are a large EPI team, and thanks to all of them throughout this whole pandemic to bring you the updated epidemiology or the numbers to our leadership and to our Navajo people to this point. So we'll continue to do the work going into the New Year. I just want to remind everyone, again, if you're new to this town hall, we haven't showed this in a while. I wanted to show it, because we do follow, we are, we do have our own Navajo Nation GATI matrix as far as our GATI measures that we report every week. If you look at this far left column, this is the indicators that we look at pretty much every day. And then we report out every week to everyone. So first is cases. We track the cases every day. And also testing capacity. We look at the testing numbers across Navajo Nation, and also public health capacity as far as contact tracers that are conducting a lot of the tracking and the tracing of COVID cases on the nation, and also hospital capacity on the nation as well, as far as staffed inpatient beds, and also staffed ICU beds, that we compile the numbers every day, I guess, reported to us from all the facilities on Navajo Nation. So these are the indicators that we focus on for the most part. And then you see the colors for different levels of response, COVID response on the nation. We are currently in the red level. All the, you know, the indicators that I just went over are within all the red level. Actually, for this time period, reporting, a couple of them are in the orange. But if there's two different colors, we go with the higher level, which is the level red. So I'll go over the numbers here. So recent cases and trends. This is a sixty-day time window graph that you're looking at here. This is, the red line is a nine-day weighted center-moving average, which is just, you know, compiling some of these, you see these bars are going up and down throughout time. And it's a better way to put the data points together so that you can see the trend better, is essentially what the red line is for. So right after this little bar here is Thanksgiving, November 25th. We did see a little bump after Thanksgiving. And since then, we have been on this downward trend, and it continues to remain so currently. Although, the caveat to this is, as President has mentioned, there's a timing of reported cases. It's been a challenge for us throughout the pandemic, especially during a holiday weekend or a holiday week, when cases are even more delayed as far as the number of days it takes for us to see, for us to see the cases from our data sources that we use. So that's the only caveat. So just keep that in mind as I report the numbers. There's low numbers that we're seeing, somewhat low numbers. I'll still remind everyone that we are seeing low numbers or less numbers. We are still in the red, though. So this is, here's the fifty cases line. And, you know, we are a little bit below it, probably around forty cases on average over a seven-day period, is essentially still a lot of cases for Navajo Nation. And then the infection rate, seven-day infection rate is at point eight-eight. Our threshold for this is at one. So we are below one, which is also a good sign. Here's case incidents across Navajo Nation spatially, and also just numbers that I'll go over here. There were two-hundred-and-thirty-three new cases over a seven-day period from December 17th through the 23rd, which puts our incidence, seven-day case rate at one-hundred-and-forty-seven cases per hundred thousand people. These are seven-day case rate, which is, if you go back, if I go back to the GATI matrix, is one-hundred-and-seventy-fourty-seven cases per hundred thousand is in the red level. It's greater than or equal to a hundred cases per hundred thousand. So that's kind of how we follow and use our Navajo Nation GATI matrix. kind of how we follow and use our Navajo Nation Gaty Matrix. So it is still a high number. We are still in the red. And everyone, um, this map here is essentially, especially on Navajo Nation, um, is all red. We only delineate different colors on top of the red to show this was just from leadership. A request to change the colors um on top of the red so that we can see who's doing better or worse than others, depending on how you look at it. So just remember that we are all in the red. And still a lot of cases that we're seeing on Navajo Nation. So with having said that, Chin Lee Service Area is the only service area in this higher uh incidence rate. Uh, two hundred to two hundred and ninety-nine cases per hundred thousand over a seven-day period. All the other service areas are within the zero to a hundred and ninety-nine cases per hundred thousand people range. So I just want to reiterate that again, even though you see this lighter shade of color and the orange, um, even the bordering states, at least as far as Navajo Nation, the service areas are concerned. We are in the red level uh COVID response. Additional metrics here that we look at, as I mentioned earlier, test capacity. Um, our seven-day test positivity rate is roughly around twelve percent. Uh, it stayed about the same as last, last reporting period. Uh, average daily tests in the last seven days is six hundred and sixty-one. Um, this is, went down a little bit from seven hundred or so from last reporting period. So there is a lot of testing that goes on um every day on the Navajo Nation. Uh, hospital capacity. Mentioned this earlier too, hospital beds, regular hospital beds. Is that fifty-six percent average daily occupancy? And then the ICU beds at sixty-nine percent average daily occupancy. So we are below um eighty percent for both of these uh indicators. So this will as all, all in, in the end, show that this will be in the, in the orange. Um, so and then contact tracers to daily case ratio is at five. We were at one at one point. We were able to get back to five. Now there's a additional contact tracers being hired across the nation. That, um, and five is our threshold. So we are right at our threshold. So this puts us back in the orange uh as far as our Gaty Matrix. This is, um, President has showed this. Um, our vaccination rate, there are about hundred and almost a hundred and fourteen thousand people have been fully vaccinated on the Navajo Nation. Uh, sixty-one percent of the total population fully vaccinated. And seventy-two percent of the eligible residents ages twelve years and older are fully vaccinated. We are, our vaccine analytics team are currently working on adding the, the five plus uh with the five to eleven-year-olds um in our vaccine rates. Hopefully we can um be able to show that um yeah, early uh next, uh next month. Um, and so I just wanted to remind everyone that we are working on that. Um, this is, uh, President has already showed this too. The epic curse for the entire pandemic. Uh, we are currently seeing this downward trend for Navajo Nation. Um, and but you know, this, uh, the US, the blue line is just, uh, this big old surge that we're seeing um currently across the US. This is our seven-day incidence bar chart comparing Navajo Nation to uh the fifty states and a couple jurisdictions. As you can see here, um yeah, New York City, uh DC, Rhode Island are all the, you know, New Jersey, Illinois, the top five with the most um or the highest seven-day case rates across the country. Um, and then here, uh, Navajo Nation is, you know, we're, we're below one of the lower uh seven-day case rates. Uh, one hundred and about a hundred and forty-eight uh cases per hundred thousand people uh over a seven-day period. And you see the, our bordering states in these red bars, New Mexico, Arizona, Colorado, and Utah. Then our seven, seven-day case rate for the entire country, from states. You know, within our region, New Mexico, Arizona, and uh Colorado with these darker shaded blue colors with higher uh seven-day case rates. And really all the, the northern and the northeastern part of the, the US is uh seeing a, the darker shade of blue color with high COVID case burden uh currently, including Florida. Also, uh, this is our uh community transmission. Sorry, my, 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 I was a little off here. Uh, community transmission. Um, the red here is high COVID transmission. The red color, you can see a lot of the red across the country. And within our region, all the counties within Navajo Nation are red. Uh, President has already showed this as well. Uh, no Omicron variant identified on the nation uh as of December twenty-first. This is report thirty-four, which is last Tuesday. We'll be getting an updated report this week. Um, and the only change here is the Delta variant row from nine fifty-one to thousand um hundred and uh over hundred, hundred cases, uh new cases identified with the Delta variant uh as of last Tuesday. This is the latest uh COVID variant profile according to CDC uh across the country as of uh last Saturday on Christmas Day. Uh, as you can see, the, the blue line here or the bar is the Omicron uh making up about fifty-nine percent of the cases uh identified with the Omicron variant uh across the country. These are the uh high-risk chapters. Uh, there were the past, the two-week time period, December tenth through December twenty-third. There were thirty new chapters identified um to make, to be on this list. So previously there were thirty-eight. So we, that went down by eight. Uh, this time around, so it's a good, good sign too. Um, and, and here they are. And then this overtime here, uh, if you see on far right is uh at least six weeks ago. These sixteen chapters have been on this list uh on a consistent basis. Uh, just for, for your information. And these chapters, I've been saying are, some of these chapters are or most of these chapters are, you know, bigger uh as far as population. Um, and also, you know, some of the characters, other characteristics are um they are, they are near a border town or they're geographically located through um a throughway where to get from one part of the rez to the other where there's high-traffic areas. Uh, it's what some of the characteristics I've mentioned before. Um, but um, I was, you know, Upper Fruitland was on here for like the longest time. And they finally uh came off this list. So, which is a, a good sign as far as a border town near Farmington. And, and last risk level assessment here, as I mentioned, our cases are, are lower uh thankfully, but when you look at it from our Gaty Matrix standpoint, cases are still high. And we remain, remain in the red threshold um likely driven by the Delta variant. And now also, we haven't identified Omicron on the nation, but as President has mentioned, it's probably here. And it's just gonna take some time um before we um identify it. I think it's just a matter of time. Uh, we get the sequencing uh from TGen to uh identify an Omicron variant on Navajo Nation. Um, it's sad to say and it's unfortunate, but um, I think it's gonna happen. And test positivity remains high at about twelve percent public health capacity, although we meet our our threshold at five and we're still right at five. So it remains on here as a uh kind of a, an indicator that we will closely continue to monitor. And hospital capacity, we're below eighty percent. Um, which is a great sign. Uh, and hopefully remains so going forward. Fifty-six percent for regular beds and sixty-nine percent for ICU beds. So um, and last, as I mentioned, cases and testing remain in the red uh threshold as far as our Gaty Matrix. These two indicators went to orange uh for public health capacity as far as contact tracers. And then hospital capacity for being below eighty percent is orange. So we were, but if two indicators suggest different threshold levels, um, the higher level is selected, you know, per CDC. So we follow that. And so we say um red is the higher level. So we stay uh in level red. So um, I am going to stop here and hand it back over to um Shama, uh Dr. Fowler. Uh, please, um, go ahead and um, uh, take the mic back. Thank you.
Night, sheyash. Aru. Nenamnesh yinlini ba'ehni tsen. Kedokhodo. Eh shee kodon yen yilnahasne di na keda mona atlet. Ko dinilchitsohne znago yavkatherle na di khadje. Eh ya naholne. Ako elaj eh ya't alhi lychigi bi ikhashik. Eh do shne eh naxa ba'ahonasen. Di indaal khahi do etadelnai ati lychiho nezalki. Na na lajigi allytsohona elki rigi eh indaal khahi. Ad abi ghanasli. Aru di isen embelnahasano eh ati kat teske. Do do yeegob bedehhuiye. Ah, chonde berdatelnai shid eh yinad bohodni. Na ihehe shik eh do shidne. Shee kodon ni deyeshet eji ma ideyeshki. Ne eh yinshla thodichy di bashishchin. Aru thakbaha ta shichyot. Ashi etashenale. Kodas ahol yeene arey iset shikke. Ko ke eh, um, aj na ol kidna keda mona eh kodon kethin tahuiyedne do. Nichil ishtana ini zel do. Abi kedi tanit. Ah, do kodon naxa eh thaknahasne. Ako ihehe nichidi ni nole. Are nichemassando. Nichenale nichitche. Nichemariyete nichenada. Danlini bahanada sohgezi ihehe. Ashi inidun zadlan dillhot. Eh ka'alchilin tahuiyedne. Aru, uh, arey etahal. Ani nikidoh ihehe. Ah, ani kodolha thata ilzi do. Nichesa. Adahafyashik eh do shidne. Aru na tani na cheni. Kodosu tsalidosh yash asa tsaladde na tani. Aru tsaladde na tani. Ke beda kehi tahn childaashne. Shin kedo ihehe. Kodot na nishmchado na nishpetzili il ido. Puta eh kodolha donhin na nishil ido. Eh do ni zinostbe naasitli. Konde alaj eh kodon kedinne. Enzining ba'it ido batikhoshbana huita. Ashi inido adenne ichil tarzik hesda. Aru do adenne ishtado nicha. Aldo ashin zagola. Ati ben deilnish doh ben deilnih nish. Aru hashine la ni ke donhin dinne. As tuisani da danlitsal kejukke. Ranitvabi ke tahasdi do. Shdo le do. Uh, do tiet edala di konalnehi. Do kosnza nas etadafedidnoh bixyel ya. Do da shinota bixyel indego otabi kadi ke deil ya. Yeegon nankinis tanda do ba'ishte edenik edan de akonde. Do hashdo itaro le shik eh do shidne. Nasgon nejyeshi. Nichina deyeshthkato le. Do ka'inil ni dole. Nichina nishnlini ba'ahuiyel ya dole. Nichina hat. Nichina na ntnchind na bezke do na bezilo. Na da hastan dole. Do eh aani tennadani ni tlini na tani itlini. Eh inkideshne. Aru ama do yre. Anale itcheysane ama sane da nohsahida. Do nichido homa dehtnatani holnoh dat. Elchnen dehtnatani milne ildo. Ako ano eh ihehe nichidi ni dole. Do eh ba'ahyehni tsen. Na dihotaani chilkhasani gi. Do na ntnchini gi eh ba'ahyehni tsen. Don ichilkhanne idon. Aru hashin sugna thwinn hisani nlini bahanne. Tahonoh. Eh do ba'ahyehni tsen. Aru di nichi, nichikein linibike tahasdi di. Do eh shibeda hanii ildo. Do tiet edala. Na dekosnas etadafedidni ni dekos do do pa'i. Denne nhisatne yizla. Hashine na nhisatbi ke tahasdi. Ndehba nichinne. Do itjeineske. Ah, ani. Akonde akke. Holnoh. Nichetnihla. Ha ma'eh do otenda. Ha jedo do otenda. Koida bukhatne da. Nichitkade da tahonohot. Ah, eh ya kon. Nichemassan yadalki. Do hot eh hasthui dosani ben da ntnchina bahani ze. Eh beni na hazad. Nlini bahonchilya. Ha eh sheenadzosbakaachilt ini bahonchilya. Sedesen. Do ana nle di dene bezahatsida. Do sa do ya kehi do bezachilida. Yehe bahatsid. Da lychidnoh lanhiyataho. Ako dinalnihi doh laho int olnili. Tos edino ah na kit. Belahot degonadeske. Elsena ala de de milliyaj. Ala de milliyaj onakinesat di na thakdino ah stha. Ako eh di benani dele ala de milliyaj thaknezat di no ah sebi enayitla. Ako di nanachniha nini Omicron. Konan nandet na nashniha nini eh di taho shanhitya hiitnita. Akonde nichilya hiitnita. Ko eh do di atinal khato. Ye'ba hatzinda. Di isze iten do ajyeta. Anih ati nil khad. Ako alalaj. Be. Nasgon nejyini teto le. Di isze benapen hazliiki. Naxa atarne shik eh do shidne. Adenne di denne belkhahodzo. Bakakehui tini ala de. Ala nezat di no ah thakpatat de milliyaj. Do ba'ah. Ashlad nezat di na tsos. Edino tsos. Ed. Ako ne na eh isze nlini naxa elya. Akonde di shladim belkhahodzo bi kehuni tini. Eh eh di denne belkhahodzo. Yeegob ya kon deske. Konde esni onet neyeshkide di yo thodje. Aru nehodzoje. Aru de pensa. Aru solle. Do otalke na danlile kodoh ya da hasne. Ako eh isabe ni tero eh di nyichidon isze abedada deesbalona khayt. Na ki ilki go da olleha jo'n li gahon na nashle. Ah, ani kada dihka. Do kon da dechilchil da ndaje. Homade ahod eh idon has thwinn hisani. Yiman yreban danochka. Ni ke ban danochka. Ah, ke na benchilta hanne. Ako hashitnik eh shee eh kohut. Ah. Deska'shalehon da ajy itzen bi khus. Eh shee ah dechneh. Alalaj tsodo khusol. Do eh kuha eh kagoontada. Aru tschedehte tana. Ha hindeh. Eh do do atben dekhesda. Hajo'da noh. Eh. Aru ekhe da. Aru di ay thola. Eh do hajo'da noh. Oh, jo'n chiltdaje. Ah, hajo'do kon tindatle. Do. Aru ni ados do kahana. Do shanhitikita itja. Aru di ni ashitzariyaholne. Be so chenade. Ani aj. Eh do kako donan nishnlini benada olka. Ako aj eh kada kada di no ah ashla. Bo olka. Ako di DPM website, Department of Personal Management, ylne. Aj namnesh bo olka. Bi da denohi. Da bededohni. Ni to ken hinaleke. Namnesh. Hadain khahi eh di chraapin tekhesi. Apply at dpm dot navajo hyphen innethin dot gov. Do eh aj eh hot ah namnesh bo olka. Ilketna vne. Ha ilen ya beso doh sanaba khat da danosanigi. Do eh do. Tatoshi eh beso nini doh shataba khat. Aru di nahamasnesh. Noh sinidi Navajo Nation employs noh sinni. As of December twenty-one. Eh kadi de de milliyaj do ah tsos. Edino ah nasteh. Eh eh nanasnesh. Four thousand and seventy-nine employees as of December twenty-one, nineteen twenty-one. Ako shee xaj na da. Nini holnoh. Chentahuiyedne. Da na ana has tui dosani. Turkkejukke danlini. Ashine na na nishdayospa'oh. La anahasne. Aru kal eh uh ba'ta astigi na eh ad and executive legislator branch. Were at ninety-seven percent fully vaccinated of our Navajo Nation employees. De konasna doh kilchenson. Di shila isze doh doh deinsanini.